10/21, take a minute to read the minutes and then I'll look for a motion. That's the minutes of February 7. Wait a minute, did I miss this meeting? Oh, that's just the public hearing.
Yes.
It's only two weeks ago.
Well, that's average.
Well, it's 28 next week.
Good, good.
Looks like we didn't vote on anything last week. For this stormwater.
I'll second the motion.
Any changes, corrections? All right then, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
All is opposed, nay? Good deal. Now, next, new business. And Kenny, what do we have here? Kentucky Southern State Subdivision Bylaw and Amendments.
They were looking at just changing some of the bylaws that they had. I didn't think it was under planning board review. But I think in the bylaws, it didn't state it. Only changes approved through planning board, which is unique. It's something you guys usually don't get into.
Yeah, but especially for homeowners associations.
Yeah, if it was changing the 55 and older or major things like that. But their attorney thought that it had to go for you guys.
Well, there's nothing in the original bylaw plans as far as any of the items it says we have to or we don't have to get involved with their bylaws. There may be something in the total package, but we don't have that in front of us. We can't come up with it just yet. So, what are the changes they want to make?
The minimum housing square footage was 1,500 before. It's being reduced to 1,300, allowing a garage underneath. It's all getting rid of this stuff.
A garage?
Two pet minimums.
Two pet minimum, yeah, make that up, yeah.
Yeah, at least two pets.
No breeding on the property they're adding in there.
Couple will breed though.
Yeah, keep an eye on that. Between pickups. The main thing was they were reducing that 1,500 down to 1,300 to make it more economical to sell houses. And they came in and told the planning board that this is what they were doing. So they didn't want to make changes without the board knowing.
And we, see, I don't see, there's, I don't see any notes or restrictions. It says that the size of the building and the size of the homes have to be 1,500.
Yeah, no, it's just in their recoverses.
1,500 or whatever that's within code?
There's no memo of the size of the house. That's just locally required.
Well, to be honest with you, I don't think this is anything that we need to get involved in. I don't know that...
It doesn't seem like the changes are that substantial, do you think?
Especially in the small.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah.
They're trying to downsize some of the sizing for the house to meet today's economy. And the 200 square foot really, 1,300 still a fairly good sized house. The 200, I didn't think that was much of a reduction to make that much of a difference.
Yeah.
I didn't see any issues with that.
Well, whatever you guys want to do is fine.
You got it.
If it was me, I'd just ignore it and say, you know, you guys do what you want to do.
But does that set a precedent so that if they come back and change something that impacts us later, they wouldn't have to? Or just, so is it, I guess what I'm really saying is would it be better if we decide not to do anything with this? Send a letter and say, you're okay here. In the future, there's going to be changes.
Well, there's weird, future changes may be as inequitous as these.
Might be.
But I, my whole point is I think this is outside of our purview. You know, as far as, you know, how, you know, how their homeowners association is going to work and, you know, the inside and outside, we don't really deal with that type of stuff. We deal with the land and the town ordinances, subdivision regulations. But it's, even in the subdivision regs, I don't think it says anything about us.
It's the green book.
About us getting involved in homeowners association criteria. Because it's another thing that we don't, it's tough for us to, we don't deal with deed restrictions because, you know, we don't have somebody out there all the time making sure who's doing what, you know, who's living where and whatnot. You know, they're tough things to enforce, so...
Is there anything in a subdivision specific to bylaws that might want to be changed that has anything to do with the land that would impact us?
Well, the land, the lot size doesn't change. They're just talking about building size. And as long as the building meets the code, it's got nothing to do with us. In fact, even that, we have nothing to do with the building code per se. So, the size of the house, we don't have to really concern ourselves with. Unless we specifically said, and I'll show you guys this in case you haven't seen one or you forget what they're about. Unless we have something specifically listed in the notes saying, you can't self-divide a lot without coming to the planning board. Or you can't add a new road without coming to the planning board.
Can they add additions of the lot to add additions?
It doesn't say hardly anything in there about homes at all. It's basically about...
Just the land.
Yeah, basically, it's the land and, and that kind of jazz.
But what if the building were bigger, they were going to go inside of the building, the building envelope?
That would, um...
I know, but it's something to be honest with you.
Well, the building envelopes are pretty big though.
Sure, we've got to keep the population low.
And that, again, would be, you know, code enforcement as far as, you know, what they're going to do. Apparently what they're trying to do, they had stated originally that they wanted to keep the homes 1,500 square feet or larger. But for whatever reason, they want to lower that so that, you know, maybe...
Is that on here though?
No, see, it's not on there. And that's why, it's in their homeowners thing. But see, we don't, we don't go through the homeowners and say, you can't have this, you can't. We just say you have to have one. That you have to have an agreement. We don't care what's in it. And we don't regulate what's in it. Yeah, because we don't get involved in that kind of stuff.
I don't understand what you're saying about the garage. Garage under the...
Well, I think what they're looking for is to have a room, a habitable room over a garage, is what my guess is.
Or have the garage under the lolly of the house.
Well, when they're talking about the garage under the, what are they talking about?
I think it was prohibited before.
Well, by us or code? Are they talking a grade level garage with a room above it? Or are they talking below grade garage? If they're talking digging down 10 feet in the ground under the foundation to put a garage, you know, there's a lot of wet land out there.
It'd be a walkout type, coming in the walkout area.
It is a wet spot, isn't it?
There's a ton of, yeah.
So it'd be kind of like a drive-in basement, right?
Exactly.
Well, all right, well, that I can see, but if they're talking...
There was a section in here, I'd have to re-find it, where it said they can't change sections two or three without going back through the town. And if we actually changed...
What were sections two and three?
The, what we're looking at here. I don't see it on this. It must have been in the document she had. The whole, the whole document.
Yeah, right. See, all we have there is like S2 or S1, that's the only section.
But in reality, if we change that in the document, then they could change this if they want, and then they wouldn't come back with the size of the house, no dogs, no breeding. That would be all up to them.
Right. Well, I don't know. I'll tell you, I would, I would rather wait and go through the whole packet than actually read it. Because I know I've got one open, I'm just bringing it in and we can... And in fact, Yole's probably got one, you were here in '05. You don't have to worry.
I may.
Yeah.
All right, so, it's, we're talking the big packet though, Yole, let me see. You know, with all your, all the changes on your plans.
Oh yeah, I never knew that.
Let's see, let's see.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that's what we want to do.
Okay, great.
I just don't want them to start involved in something if we don't need to.
Yep.
And, yeah. Because any of these, you know, like we've had issues with other subdivisions and have two factions in them, and they want their fighting over homeowners stuff, and they want to come to us, and we're not involved in it. We don't need to get involved. Well, that, or, you know, they're driving ATVs along our property and it should be a path and this, that, the next thing. So, as far as I'm concerned, we table it until next meeting when we have the full packet. And Art said he'll supply that. So we're all set. Free, all business. Speaker of Art? Stormwater ordinance, is there anything we, do we glean anything from the public hearing that makes us, that makes you want to address any issues? I see Mead John Doe's got something for you.
When we had the public hearing that it made, the...
Oh, that's right, this is the information, yes, it's, it's...
Can we have, what was her name that came and talked to us?
Jen, what's her name? Oh, oh, from Awa?
Yeah.
Niddashire.
Niddashire. Did she come and talk to, like do a little...
I don't see why not.
To talk about the concerns about just the lake quality concerns?
That's a good idea.
I don't see why not.
Because that kind of can bore her backdrop too.
I think it would, it would probably help sell it too, maybe. And, and she's, she's, has a better handle on the first issues and this kind of jazz, which is, you know, maybe, she may have an easier way of explaining it. And she'll be able to tell us what AWWA has done with 9.4. And give us a better indication of what this, you know, acting shafting group does too. So yeah, that's a good idea. What we ought to do is contact her and say, hey, this is more, once we find out what we're doing. You know, can you come in and help at the public hearing, give us 10 or 15 minutes and then answer questions?
That would be perfect, because that was the big question. Getting them to focus on what is in the ordinance rather than what's not in the ordinance is going to be our biggest... The issues that they're not, everyone's talking about are real, but it's like, why did we start here?
Right. And we're going to find, try and get a rough idea of what some of these things may cost, just so we can answer that question.
I have a pamphlet that doesn't give cost, but it can, it is, it's just a commercial product, but it shows you the kind of active systems. I was just going to give it to him first.
Oh, well, for his PowerPoint presentation, thank you. Good one.
Well, it just shows you the kind of things that are being done in suburbs and in, like commercial V areas, you know, and large areas that are systems that could maybe just be done with gravel, but they're done better when they've got containerized, you know, it's, it's like...
Are they all using containerized stuff? So they're not necessarily real simple ones in there?
No, there's not, well, they're simple systems, yes. There's simple backdoor backyard systems.
They don't have to make the things you've got to install.
Because they're modular units, so you can go big or small. But it's the kind of thing that you put in under the gravel to keep the gravel up in a level, like if you're going to do water cashman at the top of a hill in the parking area of a drive, you know, a driveway like we are, like that 13th Street project. It's, I don't know if it'll give anyone a better idea of what might be required by maintenance, but there's one picture here that really catches. You see what goes under the gravel? It may not, it may be not just vacuuming the gravel. It may be every so often someone's got to peel that gravel back and check underneath.
Look for containment, be sure of...
Look for cracks and pieces of broken plastic and, I don't know if anyone wants to just get it. It's handed out at the Maine Landscapes and Nursery Association meeting last year.
All right.
And they focused on stormwater, that was the theme, so...
Well, does, has anything come to mind that anybody sent with the informational hearing that we want to address it through the stormwater ordinance? You know, the issue of follow-up to the whole thing, I think is, that's the working thing. Right, well...
I think we've come up with the best solution we can, without getting, you know, without creating a whole bureaucracy. It just depends on if we want to commit to big government.
Well, once we get their plans, it's going to explain in the plan what needs to be done and how often it needs to be done. And one way or another, we'll track that, whether we have to write on a sheet of paper, you know, Chip brings in his thing on 2/21/13, and it says that 5/17/15 it needs to be checked. Okay, it's on a piece of paper, we keep this in a file somewhere, and every month, somebody takes one minute, looks at it and says, who's up for grabs this month? You know, that's the best we can do. If we want to get some kind of a computer, you know, somehow, if it can be easily entered into the computer, fine. If not, we got a million sheets of paper in there with stuff on it. We can have one more file, it's not going to kill us. And it'll say right there when it has to be addressed and a phone call. Have somebody checked it out yet? If not, it's time. And then, you know, you've got your 1, 2, 3 strikes, whatever else we lay out in that...
Who makes the phone call?
Enforcement. Art, who's ever closest?
No, seriously, who's, I mean, that's part of the...
Secretary.
Well, you got to have that, that man gets into the job description somehow. You can't just say that there's going to be a phone call made without giving the responsibility to somebody.
We could have two different categories of LIDs. We have LIDs that are totally on the owner system and LIDs that, like septic, have to be on the calendar.
They're only on the owner system if the operation and maintenance says they're on the owner system. And it's going to spell right out there what, how they need to be addressed down the road. And we said that code enforcement was going to, was going to line through this, correct?
I've heard that.
Code enforcement or a secretary will make the phone call or send a postcard, you know? It's, your thing is doing...
When you make the phone call, the number's going to be changed, there's going to be somebody else. When you send a letter, it's going to come back because they've sold the house. It's going to be tough tracking and I'm anticipating adding to my budget about $10,000. So, whether it gets supported or not, that's two separate things.
So $10,000 for...
Additional staff.
Additional staff.
For the hours for it.
But we thought it would be phased in over a number of years. Well, it's asking us...
You didn't bring anything in for this year's budget, did you? When we look at the agreed book, they needed out the number you have in there.
That's last year's.
That's last year, so there's nothing in there, but you're going to add some.
I did do this week.
And you're going to add something for this in there.
Yeah, and we've been requested to flatline the budget, so I'm assuming it's going to get flatlined. So, we're going to put a regulation in with no money to enforce it, possibly, I don't know.
Well, we don't know what's going to happen.
We don't know. I mean, the budget could get passed, like the money could be there and this could be voted down.
And if the only...
Or this could be voted down, or it could be shot down, so...
It'll take a few man-hours until a couple of years down the line, you could have on this.
No, I anticipate an extra three hours per person just going through what LID is about to do it. Now I got to go out and get ahold of your hand and...
Can this be addressed with, with an additional fee though? We have been talking to fee for...
Oh yeah, it'll offset, sure.
Yeah.
But I mean, the worst thing to do is to tell them that you need to go get an architect and a survey firm. And a big project, yeah, it's, you know, 2.5% of the cost of the project.
Well, then, you know, at the public hearing then, we're going to have to be upfront about all this. Where you have to try and find roughly what these things may cost. Some of these may cost a design. And we're going to have to say that, hey, it's going to cost the town an extra $5,000, $8,000, $10,000 in seven or eight years to manage this. Now, is it worth it to you people to, maybe this is going to help the lakes, is it worth it to you to spend this extra money? If it is, fine. If it isn't, that's fine too. It's up to you, it's your town, it's not my town. So, the more information we get out there, you know, plus or negative, I don't care. I just want the most information out there so they, we present that with everything we possibly can so that people aren't saying in the background, oh, well, you know, they didn't say anything about this because it's going to cost this or that, you know? Screw them, we're going to try and tell them everything. And if we scare them off, then we scare them off.
We're mostly looking at the owner system without them having some teeth behind it if something comes up, right? Isn't that good?
Oh, I thought it was all enforcement.
Maybe too, that's what I...
Well, if they're informed of their management schedules and notify the town, there's little expense on the town to bar it, I mean.
Well, except that if they have to go back or if we have to end up making the phone calls, I forget exactly what it said about who notifies who.
Yeah.
You know, maybe...
Well, it makes sense if the landowner would notify the town when the management was done, as the routines of the town wouldn't have to be asked them if it was done.
It's easy to forget that stuff. You just need to, you might just do your car every year.
So it'd be nice to have, well, there's both systems in place, I guess, so that if they didn't notify the town when the town would have to, they wouldn't have to do it every time, that seems unnecessary.
Right, because if, there's no point in doing this if they aren't going to be maintained down the road. And every, even the little simplest things, eventually, if they're not maintained, they're going to stop working. And I'm not going to support this if we don't have some real kind of checkup, follow-up on the maintenance of it. Because then it's, then it's just pointless. And it may save the lakes for a couple of years, or it may stave off things getting worse, but if the people don't care about it that much, then screw it, I'm not supporting it now. Why? Throw one more thing in front of them if we're not going to follow up on it. And we just look like chumps. You know, that's just throwing good after bad, that's not, that's, you know, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. You get that? The road to hell is paved with good intentions, people.
So, anyway. So is there a way that we could approach the selectmen upstairs to get a heads up from them? Give them a heads up, maybe is a better way of saying it, as to what we think the costs are going to be? Because you can't have the impression that they're the ones who make the decision on what the fees are going to be for...
But they need input. They just can't say, we're going to charge...
$100.
$100!
But can we do this before...
Maybe input from him.
The public hearing?
It has to be done before they come up with a budget. Because once they come up with a budget, you know, then we can't be adding something in there saying, oh, you know, this is going to cost them $3,000.
But the permits are not going to be part of the budget?
No.
No, that's just offsetting.
Right. So, so that doesn't have to be done by next week? But it would have to be done before the public hearing? Because that was the thing that I kept hearing, is that people were interested, wanted to know, well, what's it going to cost?
Right, well, absolutely, absolutely. They want to know what's it going to cost to do this.
If we don't come there with that information, I think we're going to be behind the eight wall.
I know, and that's why I said, that's what we have to come up with, is what, our best information on what these things roughly are going to cost. They don't, right now, they're not, they're not looking at what the maintenance is going to be or the enforcement down the road. They want to know, what's this going to cost me? If I'm building a new house or if I'm doing a big deal on my property, what additional costs are there going to be?
Is there anybody out here that those installations is going to use?
Well, there's people that do the plans.
The landscapers good at all, with excavators.
Yeah, they'll all do it. It's the guy drawing the...
It's the guy that draws the plan if they have a rough idea. It's like an engineer that does anything, he has a rough idea of what it's going to cost.
So who do we, who do we go to to find out?
North County saw the water, maybe we should talk to the Forest Bell Associates, if they get into this type of designing. Who's the guy, remember that house we went to on 13th Street, 11th, 12th Street?
Wow, yeah.
The guy at the end of the road there?
Ask him like...
The architect doing their place, they had that, they had some kind of groundwater or some kind of, you know, landscape guy who's going to be doing some type of plant. Maybe we can get some information from them, roughly what are these types of things cost? What would something like that cost? Not that specific, but like what that guy's doing. So we can let people know. We'll have to, we'll have to try and glean these on our own.
This is going to be a pretty big sliding scale. I mean, if you look at the LID manual right here, it does give a cost for some of the types of LID techniques, you know, it gives a rough cost for, this one just a dry well and this is...
It's really the plan and the engineer, the guy that draw the plan. Because he can save you a ton of money with simple, easy crushstone and vegetation versus some of the pre-...
Well, those are for, my guess is, well, yeah, where there's a lot of exfiltration, it has to be handled. And it can't just be handled in the rain garden or, you know, front stream.
We've got the same situation, you're going to draw...
This is attached to gray water used too. So it's using gray water for irrigation also.
Where are you looking at?
In the LIDs, it's just at the, when they talk about each, you know, there's the dry well.
It looks like half a dozen, eight or nine little, simple types of LIDs, and they give you a rough estimates for some of them. Do they fit the bigger ones or is there any...
Brass wheel. It adds something for all of them.
Does it?
The bioretention soil filter. And there's a cost section for each one of these things.
Any of these things available for people here?
They go to a square foot facility and they give you some for people to, especially if they're not building a place, they're just asking.
Yeah, so I ask Phil to tell, like, just casually one day, like, he was over and...
Here, you keep this one here.
He says...
All right, don't let my water flow off.
Landscapers really do it, it's expensive.
If somebody seriously wants to...
Yeah.
But the property is working well.
At least we've got some available, we're going to... Service people.
Like right here, you know, for the previous papers, it gives a breakdown cost and estimate on maintenance for it.
It's a little dated.
Yeah, I don't know what one is, yeah.
I mean, this is a...
2007, yeah.
You know, this failure to implement operations and maintenance plan starts, the paragraph starts when the designated official for the town. So, who is the designated official? Who decides who the designated official is? You know, it eventually comes down to code enforcement, but it starts off with a designated official, so... Well, which is code enforcement, because that's what they should state.
It's in the zoning ordinance.
What is?
The implementation of this LID, stormwater ordinance, is going to be in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
As that comes in under our office.
Right, right. And the designated official that by default is the code official. Right. Simply because that's where all, that's where all the, the initial contact comes from. That's where you get your permit, that's where you, you know, find out what you can and can't do. You know, sometimes there may be a town manager that handles this stuff first, or there may be, you know, some other function that's like...
I mean, to me, the biggest, that was the biggest common thread through what everybody said at that information session was, how are you going to enforce this?
That was one of the themes of the...
It was a major theme.
Yeah.
Tiring money.
So you, so you, I mean, I think we need to have some, you know, this is how we're going to track. It's going to be, you don't, I don't think you need a software. What you need is somebody to enter some data on a computer.
Well, yeah, sure.
That, you know, this is, and then somebody has to be disciplined to refer to that on a, I don't know, monthly or quarterly or...
I'm sure there's something where the computer can notify the person when the, when it was timed and checked.
Well, like Kenny said...
Why you should have to go and look.
People are going to move, addresses are going to change, this, that, and the next.
Well, the address is going to be pretty stable, I think.
Well, I would think, I would be worried.
The address will be-
It's true, the owner's going to change.
Yeah.
And these are second homes.
That is another thing we've been talking about.
Yeah, I think it's an open-ended thing where you've done it so we can inspect at any reasonable time versus notifying, looking, asking.
I want to see her. I can't find a copy of this. What we got in here is a maintenance schedule that you're supposed to- Right, and the maintenance schedule, yeah.
That could be a manual.
That's, that's why whoever designs it, whoever designs it is going to know when it has to be, how it has to be maintained or when it has to be maintained. And that is part of the information that we get when they fill out their, fill out their permit. They bring in their plan, and part of the plan is an operation and maintenance schedule.
So that's, that's right, that's in here.
Right.
This, this talks about buffer zones. Inspect the level spread on monthly.
Yeah, where's our, where's our document?
So it's monthly.
But it's that's the-
He just locks over there, make sure the water can go and all the directions.
Yeah, it's not necessarily code enforcement.
We're not landlords.
Well, I know, but we're-
Right, well, some of those things could be monthly, right, absolutely.
Well, kind of going back to what Jessica was saying in the beginning, you know, because like things like the pavers and stuff, there's no way.
Semi-
No, just making sure that the paver, they have clean with the break, and that they're not deteriorating, or they're still functioning.
We were looking at a large riprap project about a month and a half ago. And the person who designed it explained to the maintenance of cleaning the riprap. And I said, what do you mean maintaining it? You're taking all the rocks out, cleaning them, putting them back in. Like, I never realized that you were doing that with riprap, but, I mean, that's a huge process.
They must vacuum the scene out, too.
Vacuum is becoming much bigger on the ditching now. Instead of ditching all your roads, they'd rather see you vacuum it every year.
And then things like the septic, like at that Gaia, is it Aspen? Where there's more about sort of a regenerative maintenance.
Yeah. It's, it's one of those things you're, you're almost going to need to implement to see how it works out.
Yeah, it's simply going to be a learning curve.
Yeah.
How this is going to-
On page five, down to the last paragraph, it talks about all plans need an operation and maintenance schedule, which, um- That explains how they ensure the system functions as designed, and then-
Which says the most concerning areas who designed it. The installation of it's easy, it's the designer.
Well-
And that designer's also giving you the operation and maintenance schedule.
Right. And then on page seven, eight, a failure to implement operation and maintenance plan. That's where, maybe it's too succinct, lays out exactly what the deal is. If you don't follow your operation and maintenance plan. So we've addressed, you know, we've addressed that. If, if you want to put more teeth into it, you know, it's the time to do it soon.
Well, if it's in the zoning ordinance, it's a violation of the zoning ordinance, it's two seventy-five a day.
After they lose it court.
Or you can settle out of court for whatever you want.
Well, yeah, right, right, yeah, you're right.
You probably find them doing that maintenance pretty quick, you know, it's simple anyway, this is sure.
The toughest part is there's so many people doing these voluntarily now, that when we mandate and enforce it, I don't know if the voluntary aspect is going to be diminished or-
Well, if they do it-
Are they doing it voluntarily to the standards that the LID would-
They think they're doing the right thing.
They're doing it because they want to protect the lake.
Exactly.
So that's not to change.
Then they'd want it to be-
No, but as soon as you tell them, maybe you spend two, three, four, five thousand dollars for an engineer to have a plan done, it's probably not going to be positively accepted.
But they may not all cost that way. Some of them may be simple, like the simple things that some people are doing now. That may be all they need to do.
And I'm just assuming to get an engineer on your property to calculate the drainage flow for your amount of water coming on and coming off, that's going to take some time and some calculations.
And this is for new construction, too.
I think it's anytime you're doing any of those things.
Well, yeah, we've got, you know, X minus square footage, Y, big school, little school.
What if they're doing like some kind of major like renovations?
Having the addition of that, paving a dry play.
That's-
And there'd be some things that don't need permits, you know?
Okay? It's up to the town, whatever they want to do. It's up to you guys how we present this to them, what, you know? I, I think the more information we give them, that, you know, we don't weigh them all down with all kinds of extraneous crap.
The intention is a great intention. I think it's ten years ahead of time.
Oh, there's another, didn't I just say that?
Yeah, you were paving some road.
Yeah, that's right. My mistake, sorry.
It's just ratings week.
Well, it's just not real.
Nonsense.
I think it is. That's always a word.
If we weren't sitting on watersheds, I mean, we're kind of in a special location.
It's everywhere, it's a watershed. And I think Dennis Longin made a point out that everybody, even the guy at the top of the hill, he's in a watershed.
Well, I have nothing against the pliant to the whole town, but I thought the whole idea of this particular ordinance was to start small, try it on for size and, and-
And maybe work out the bugs before you try and push it any further.
Exactly. And I think that's a way to sell it.
This is where people really realize their problems are going to show up right away. Not in a place two miles away from a river or a pond, what he's got running off his land, but the guy who lives right on the river or the, or the pond. You know, what comes off his land goes right in the water, and it can affect it, you know, lickety-split. So if this is something that town wants to do, I think we're better off starting kind of small, but right where all the action is, which is, you know, shoreline zone.
That's where most of the construction is.
Right.
That's where most of the money is. That's where most of the problems are.
So how many again are we doing per year in the shorelands, all about approximately?
Shoreland zone permits, we're pulling around a hundred. A lot of them, a half of them are minor. I mean-
So how quickly, I was just thinking, how quickly is this maintenance going to, is it going to become exponential on, you know, what we need?
The maintenance is going to be the after problem.
Right.
The first part is explaining the ordinance and giving them references to where to go get help.
Right.
Small projects, active leaky water sheds, so they can design this stuff up. I don't know if they can calculate the load coming in, the load going off, the phosphorus and all that, and maybe a little bit too big for them, or larger projects. Larger projects, they can get an engineer surveyor, the survey in time, mine pro or photo post, they can do all that work. But you're sending a team out.
You need a base map as long as you need it.
Exactly.
So anything that someone low, and you're making a base map for is, can be used for anything.
But if he did one for your neighbor, that's not going to work for you. Because it's a whole different water flow coming down through.
Yeah, they're all pretty much site-specific, unfortunately.
Exactly.
Well, hey, it's not, um- Everybody costs money, nothing's free. There's no free lunch. There's not a good one.
No free lunch. Somebody paid for that lunch.
Again, whatever they want them to do. Um, so, besides these, trying to add some costs, is there anything else that we need that you want to address in the ordinance? Now, it's already gone to the slider, right?
Well, I have a question that costs a lot, and I'm not really bothered by it because I, it probably, if you could just help me think it through. It's like when we're calculating the phosphorus, how do we know if one property versus the property next to it is the culprit? If the phosphorus is going up, you know, and wherever they check it?
The guy at the bottom of the hill on the road is the one getting all the water, and it's going to cost him a ton of money for his implementation.
No, but if the phosphorus is going up and, and say, you know, say there's twelve points on the lake that they're checking, and the point nearest BPL, you know, this one specific, but there's neighbors, of course, that haven't upgraded, how are they going to know? I think we really have to just leave that as theoretical.
I think they just-
And calculate zero and, and not really-
Well, that's why they have the phosphorus, phosphorus basins for all these different lakes.
You know, this is what- It's not going to change for the neighbor either.
No, the actual load, the water flow coming across the property.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're just going to try and collect price information between now and then. Unless Art comes up with a better way to use the other slide. Collect what?
Do you guys think this thing, is Art, Kenny, did you, you know what I'm talking about, the cost of the thing?
Yeah.
It's for some smaller projects.
The implementation, to me, is the easy part to calculate.
Oh, that's what you were saying. It's like, who's going to design it, the cost of that. Well, this is half, well, this is one part of the cost, so we got to find the other part of them, okay?
Yeah, that's the easy part.
Yeah.
Remember Peter Cashin? Get him on the phone while I was kind of lasting. Call around to these people. He knows all these people, and those are all their personal phone numbers.
They all know him and have caller ID.
There you go.
He's calling rehab on a tape when I was the old folks.
He may be watching us right now.
Yeah, live.
Well, you can't, they don't get over there. You gotta be inactive.
Oh, yeah, we live.
No, he'd be watching us.
Jeez, I really be cussing with somebody. Kind of make it worthwhile. This would be must-see TV, you know what I mean?
I keep thinking it would be good to call someone like Salmon Falls and stuff, but I don't know how involved they are.
Salmon Falls.
Mysteries.
They're all in here today at a class, too. I could acquiesce to them on that. But I thought they were implementation. It's the design guy, somebody more than a civil engineer or could knowledge.
So like landscape architect. I don't know, make some cold calls. FB probably is a good place to start.
That one's in York County Soil and Water, see what we can get out of it.
Yeah, and even if we just end up with too many names for you to follow up, but maybe some of us could.
Right.
FB might be able to refer us to the next.
We'll take care of it. So I'll take care of it if nobody else. It'll get done, all right? Rest assured. So we're all set for more of that? Does anyone else have anything they want to throw in? Arthur? No, 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 it's all valid. Whatever my agenda. Agenda?
The other one.
Oops, wait a second. No, that's last week's.
So it's, we have to vote again on the-
Yeah.
June?
This is our final vote.
It says on our long term agenda.
On the stormwater-
Yeah, I don't have mine. I think it's on-
Ordinance, whatever the government's got.
Yeah, since February, we're doing first final vote. Time to be, to be, to be.
And make a motion. Somebody, okay. Somebody make a motion. Well, thanks for the motion. Well, do that.
I have a motion to accept the ordinance as currently stated.
I got two. Is there a second? Oh, thanks for liking a second. Well, I'll have work on the jury. One, two.
Who is the third?
One, two. Oh, who voted last time? Oh, both of you guys voted, didn't you? Maybe you've been auctioning all of them. Who was the last guy before that?
No, I, I think I voted because, because you left the meeting early.
Oh, that's right. Oh, when you were sick? All right, I'll give it to you.
So I think you wrote this.
Art? Yes. Uh, any further comments? Any further discussion? We're all set with what happened. We more or less figured what they'd be talking about, the information we're having. We still have real public hearing down the road. All right then, no further discussion on the stormwater, post-stormwater ordinance? All of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? It's a done deal. Four seven. It's all we need now, vote. All in, all in attack.
I think people would be more sympathetic to knowing that we're trying on for size, or they would start saying, wow, I love your waste. I mean, I would hit a lot of-
I didn't hear the last one, the last one was coming through, two weeks ago. We didn't say too much about the fact that it was going to start that way, except in attack.
No, we didn't. We didn't say much of any.
Not because we stayed in the minutes that each agenda over here is, uh-
Six people, four votes.
There's only five official votes ever. If we had a hundred people, there's only five official votes.
Okay, I got it.
The alternate.
Alternate, it still counts.
It has been.
They sometimes second things, but.
Important.
Yeah, second things.
We're just waiting for someone to take this court. We're not too worried by that. Any other business? We're going to address countryside estates next time we have the full pack.
I think I missed it.
Remind me that, Scott.
And what do we want? Do we want some of the consent to us? Do we want the landlord to present that to us?
Just these couple of changes. It's up to you.
I know I did have two.
If you let him present it to the needs, fine. If you think they should come in, um, help.
She was just tied up tonight in command, so.
Well, we'll scare, if we scare up the packet ahead of time, and we run through it, see that, you know, we have nothing to do with that, we can just tell her not to bother, and just say, at the next change, we'll say we have nothing to do with this, see? Anything else? All right then. Good night, Cable Land.